Do we have to roll call for minutes? Roll call?
Hi.
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 And the motion carries.
Any members of the audience who'd like to speak this evening? You have none. Rick, could you walk us through the agenda and we have two replacements to plug in there?
That's correct. We'll just highlight quickly, the board did meet on June 7th. It was the annual meeting where the board accepts the graduates and then that evening, or the, excuse me, that Friday, the, or excuse me, Sunday, the 9th. Then following that, the graduation did occur. It was a great event at Target Center. I thank the board members for being present and awarding those diplomas. We know we have many happy seniors. The agenda for tonight, we will have a variety of reports. One on our Alt Comp report and learn more about that. We'll have an update on the budget as the board will be acting later today, or tonight, on the budget for 1314. And then a quick leadership update on my behalf. Consent agenda items, again, quite routine. And from there, we will move to the action items. Again, very focused on the 1314 school year as it relates to budgets, some expenditures, and some action plans as it relates to the secondary report, as well as the eLearning Square, which is our Bring Your Own Device Initiative to school. We have some policies for review. Moving then to discussion, again, some more policies to review, and then we'll close it off with information and updates. And that would conclude the agenda plans for the evening. Also, and just note that Member Scritner is joining us via WebEx, and we welcome her.
Thank you, Rick. At this time, I'll accept an amendment to insert these two replacement items into tonight's agenda. The first being an action item for the superintendent's performance goal pay, and the second being the discussion item.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to amend and add these additions. The superintendent's performance goals pay and the school board committee appointments has been updated and will replace the one that's in the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
These are both administrative errors and they're not additions. They're just errors that we did not throw out appropriately. Apologize for that.
No problem. Thank you, Rick. Any discussion? Roll call. Motion we're voting on is to insert these two items into the agenda that were incorrectly inserted initially.
Hi.
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 One additional item, I'd like to combine a couple items in order to expedite tonight's meeting a little bit. The two main ones are the, actually, we've got a couple up here. We have items A, B, C, D, and E we can combine. And then, moving on from there, items L, we have 1 through 3, but they're listed in the agenda as separate items. And this is policies under Section M 1, 2, 3, and 4. Can I get a motion to combine those items into a single motion?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We combined them A through E and L 1, 2, and 3, and M 1, 2, 3, and 4 into single motions. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hi.
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 Motion carries.
We're onto reports, 2012-13 Alt Comp report.
We are moving into our fifth year, I believe, of, sixth year. We're moving into our sixth year. We've completed our fifth year.
Don't let them slip by.
There it is. Randy Smazel and Andy Loger and Libby Sandvik will give us a quick overview of the success we've had and where we're going next with our Edina Alt Comp plan, and we welcome them tonight.
Good evening. Chair Meyer, Superintendent Dresson, School Board members. This evening, we're going to present to you our Edina Alternative Compensation Annual Report, and we're going to be highlighting this report and a summary of some of the activities from this year. This is about enhancing teachers' professional growth, which is about supporting student success. So myself, Randy Smazel, Director of Teaching and Learning, and we have Libby Sandvik, our alternative compensation facilitator. And then, we're also joined by Andy Loger, who is one of our Alt Comp instructional coaches. So this report further fulfills a state statute, which requires us to complete an annual report and submit it to Minnesota Department of Education. So we'll get into it. I'm going to turn it over to Libby.
Thank you. As Dr. Dresson said, we just completed our fifth year of Alt Comp, which is pretty hard to believe. We're five years into this, moving into our sixth year. And, you know, again, just to remind you, we have seven coaches in the program, plus myself as facilitator, and we work with the non-probationary staff in the district. All teachers in the district do participate in Alt Comp, and that's required by MDE statute. Probationary staff members work with their administrator. The coaches use a cognitive coaching model in which they collect data and pose questions for reflective conversation with the teachers that they work with. And as studies have shown, such as this one with, or by Bruce Joyce and Beverly Showers, when peer coaching is added to these other components of professional development, the application of skills is greater when the peer coaching element is present. This year, coaches had over 4,600 meetings with non-probationary staff members. These meetings consisted of goal-setting meetings in the fall, in which teachers set both professional and student goals. This included observation cycles. So an observation cycle consists of a pre-observation conference, the observation, the post-observation conference. There were meetings in which teachers and coaches reflected on data and analyzed the impact of their pedagogy and assessment on student achievement. This is a breakdown throughout the year of how many meetings occurred each month, and there definitely is an ebb and a flow based upon the crazy moment of the school year. But the important thing to remember is, these were 4,600 meetings where teachers were engaged in conversation about their practice and the impact on student learning. And those are 4,600 meetings that weren't occurring prior to Alt Comp. Alt Comp has three main components. The first one is the Professional Growth Plan, or PGP, and that's the observation component. In the fall, teachers meet with their coaches to set their goals, or meeting with their administrators as well. They pick two performance areas, and those are their focus for the observations throughout the school year. Each teacher is observed by at least two individuals during the school year. The coach conducts two observations, and then the teacher selects someone of their choice to complete the third. Over 75% of our teachers choose a peer. Many choose another coach or their building-level administrator. This year, administrators chose to work with six non-probationary staff members. They have that ability. And all six of these were selected at some point mid-year, where the administrator chose to take over the coaching responsibilities. One of these six was not awarded their PGP, meaning they did not meet their observational goals. That teacher did appeal the decision by their administrator. We convened the Appeals Committee. There was an appeals hearing that was held, and through unanimous decision, the teacher's appeal was denied. We also have the Student Learning Goal component. And each fall, teachers meet with their coaches to set student-focused goals emphasizing student achievement, student success, and incorporating all students in their classrooms. So most goals are written that all students will, as opposed to just selecting a portion of students who you, teachers, hope will achieve a goal. All of these student learning goals should be aligned to the site goal, which would be the MCA-based goal. This year, 10 non-probationary teachers did not receive their incentive, which means they did not implement their goal. We also, this year, had the Enhanced Student Learning Goal, which was added to the program a year ago when we rewrote the MOU. MDE had some issue with it, and last fall, we came to you amending our MOU, and we still offered it as an option to teachers with the incentive being paid out of the teaching and learning budget. So the Enhanced Student Learning Goal had an extra $75 incentive that was awarded to teachers if they reached the target stated in their goal. There were also additional criteria required for the goals, and all goals needed to be submitted and reviewed by the SLGE review team. We received 20 goals last fall that the review team reviewed. 13 were accepted, and of those 13 teachers, nine earned their SLGE extra $75 incentive. The four that did not, did not meet that target as stated in their goal. The third and final part of our Alt Comp plan is the Site Improvement Plan, or the site goal. And these are goals that are included in sites, site improvement plans. They are approved by the board in October. They're the MCA component. And right now, we are awaiting the MCA results to know what percentage of teachers earned that incentive for the 1213 school year. For the 1112 school year, we had five sites who achieved their goal, which was equivalent to approximately 26% of Edina teachers earning that incentive. So every spring, we have administered a survey, and we've continued to use the same questions so that we can compare our results. And this survey was administered this year on May 15th. We had 206 teachers respond. And for the first question here, the first set of data, teachers, when asked the question, or when answering the statement, "I value the collaborative reflection," I'm sorry. Let me go back. "When answering the statement, I am more intentional with my instructional practices, job performance, due to my student learning goal." 81.1% of teachers either agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. 75% of teachers agreed with the statement. My participation in Alt Comp has had a positive effect on student achievement. And as you can see, the results from the last five years have all roughly been in the same range. One statement that they replied to that we thought was very positive was the question, "My instructional coach helps me reflect about my work and supports my growth as a professional." 94% of teachers strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. And that's supported in the summative survey that coaches administer throughout the year. A few years ago, someone suggested that we survey teachers throughout the year. And so after each observation cycle, coaches give teachers the opportunity to complete this formative survey. And over the course of the year, we had 589 teachers complete it. And when they answered the question, "The most recent observation helped me grow professionally in the following areas." They could select more than one. Overwhelmingly, teachers selected reflection on practice. So teachers are valuing that opportunity to reflect with their coaches, and that was conveyed in both the end-of-the-year survey and this formative survey. In both surveys, we did offer teachers opportunity to comment, and two comments that I think support our mission in Alt Comp are, "I value the collaborative reflection, peer observations, and constructive feedback. These elements help me adjust my teaching practice to have greater impact on student learning." And, "Alt Comp helps me focus my attention on a certain part of my instruction, so I can improve. Even after a particular goal is completed, I use what I have learned in the following years to improve my effectiveness as a teacher." As a program, we have strengths, I think, that are easy to identify, all stemming from the strong coaching team that we have, and the way in which they are able to implement the cognitive coaching model. Currently, all eight of us have gone through the eight days of Cognitive Coaching Foundation training. And currently, Jim Hawthorne, one of the coaches, is going through additional training to become an agency trainer. So last summer, he did four days of training. This summer, he's going to complete those eight days. And next spring, we will have him as our own in-house cognitive coaching trainer. And I think this provides our district great opportunity, not only in pursuing cognitive coaching as we move into teacher evaluation, but given the number of districts in the metro area that are also using cognitive coaching, we have the ability to offer trainings for our staff and bring in teachers and coaches from other districts to help, you know, give us a little, greater opportunity for learning from others, and we could charge them. We also, because of our strong coaching team, have been able to implement our Alt Comp program with great fidelity across the district. So the Department of Education also identified this when we did our program review this winter. And as they visited, as the review team visited multiple sites, it was very clear that the expectations of the program are the same regardless of what site you happen to be at. This is also seen in the way in which our coaches review student learning goals. Teachers are continuing to increase the rigor that they're asking of themselves with these student learning goals, but our coaches are also reviewing them in groups of two and three to ensure that the level of rigor is consistent across the district. And then, as we move into next year, into the sixth year, our coaches are going to continue to innovate to help teachers grow in some of these PGP areas that they possibly have worked on for three or four years. And that could be just in the variety of data collection opportunities and using our iPads, the ways in which we are able to share some of that data with them. And just as teachers in the classroom don't have a one-size-fits-all lesson plan, we, as coaches, need to make sure that we're differentiating to meet the varied needs of our staff. Now, one big element next year will be that transition from Alt Comp to teacher evaluation and how teacher evaluation encompasses Alt Comp possibly. As coaches, we see that we have that connection to all teachers in the classroom, and one of our jobs next year will really be to help teachers understand what that transition is going to look like and how the programs will be similar or possibly different. And Randy will touch further on how these will combine.
So our statute across the state of Minnesota is to have a new teacher evaluation model in place for 2014 and 15. And an element of that statute is that we may provide time during the school day for peer coaching. The current model for Alt Comp is a cognitive coaching model, which encourages reflection on the part of that teacher. If we switch that to more of an evaluative model in the use of those coaches, that would be a pretty big change. We do recognize the fact that these two systems can come together, though, to support each other. And that is really our goal for 2014-15, is that we figure out how to bring the Alt Comp coaching model and the new teacher evaluation model together so that that reflection that is generated through that coaching support becomes part of that teacher evaluation model as well. So that's our goal. We don't have the details around that figured out yet, but we know that in conversations with staff, that that would be appreciated from staff if we can bring those two models together from the state. So at this point, we would like to open the conversation up to the board for any questions that you have about our Alt Comp program.
I just have a quick question. I had the opportunity to shadow with some, a day of Alt Comp about a year ago, and I really appreciated learning more about the care and the detail and the intention of the program. What I'm wondering is if any of you could share either an individual example or maybe a more general example of how this has changed the experience of a student.
I can think that goes back to Student Learning Goal, and teachers really have a focused goal in mind for a group of, whether it's a class of students or all the students they meet. And, you know, I had a teacher who implemented, wanted to implement more critical thinking in a lower-level class, and the student's growth, because it was, she measured it and was very intentional about it, was very apparent, and the students were kind of buy, were buying into it because she was so intentional, and so there was a lot of growth in that area. Thanks.
I was part of the state review team, so I spent a day, and I think really, the most compliments we get is about the quality of our coaches and also the quality of the training that our coaches is getting before and during. And you do hear when you talk to, because part of the review is talking to particular teachers and asking them questions about the relationship, and you hear a lot of, a lot of very positive reviews from teachers saying that it is very valuable to them to have somebody independent in the classroom who can look around and say, oh, your students are paying atten, you know, depending on what you're asking them to observe, they will give you a sort of an objective feedback that teachers see is very valuable, too.
How do you see, what do you see as being most difficult about trying to combine the two plans in terms of Alt Comp and then the teacher evaluation model? What do you see about being difficult, and how will you overcome that?
Well, the nature of the Alt Comp model right now is not evaluative. It's to help ask questions and put the teacher into a, into a position where they're just simply reflecting upon their practice. And really, that, that position is coaching them through questioning and getting that self-reflection to occur. So it's really intended to be non-evaluative. So when we change the model, then that puts that person in kind of a different position relative to that teaching member. So I think that'll be one of the challenges, is if they're viewed as somebody who is evaluating my performance versus somebody who's helping me reflect upon my practice, that, that'll just be a challenge for us to figure out. What does that look like exactly, and how can we have staff buy into that model, support that model, and use it to continue to grow as a system? So that'll be our challenge, I think.
And to add one more thing, I think another issue is that teacher evaluation, the way that the statute is written, gives a lot of opportunity and a lot of ways for districts to be creative in what it's offering teachers, with portfolios, with multiple ways to do the observations. And the Q Comp statute is very rigid. And it must be three classroom observations, and you can't deviate from that. And even in the way that MDE did not allow us to implement that Enhanced Student Learning Goal, so it's, you know, it's trying to be able to offer more opportunities to teachers under the teacher evaluation, but still fit within that very rigid box of what works for the Q Comp program that we have.
One of the observations was that in the department, that the Q Comp department and the teacher evaluation department are not at all talking to each other. They are two separate departments that are somehow...
Within MDE?
Within MDE, yeah. There is no synergy in there, so, but I think, I think that is a struggle that other school districts that have the Q Comp are also going through. So something is probably going to come out in the next year that will help all of us. And hopefully, there'll be a little bit more synergy in the department itself.
We hope so.
Randy and... Go ahead, Lonnie.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that really struck me that I hadn't thought about is that, you said at the beginning, this is 4,600 meetings that weren't taking place before Alt Comp started. And I think as we look toward trying to combine these two, one of the things we have to watch out for is that we're not adding even more meetings. I think that teachers find these meetings valuable to their practice, and we need to make sure that we keep the meetings that way, since we're definitely adding to people's workload by adding all these meetings to the calendar. Thank you.
One question I had is for this coming year, is there any meaningful differences in the program for 1314?
The program will basically look the same as it did this year, with the exception of the SLGE. We would not be using the SLGE format this next year. We had about 13 teachers originally sign up for participating in that. About nine, I think, completed that and met their SLGE. But that was something that we did kind of independent from Alt Comp, because the requirement from MDE was that we offer this to all staff. And the only way we could have done that that late in the year was to redo the MOU for all staff in the fall, and we didn't even know if all staff would be interested in participating in it. So we tried it as a pilot. That was an experiment. We got some data from that. But as we moved to this new teacher evaluation model, that performance element for teachers is embedded in the statute around teacher evaluation. So to some degree, that will replace that SLG element that was in Alt Comp. So to summarize, the program will remain the same next year. The SLGE portion would be removed then from the program.
Excellent. And I saw 10 non-probationary teachers did not receive a portion of their incentive. Is it non-participation? Is there participation but not fully? What sort of, I'm just trying to get a sense if we're, we're not getting full participation, I guess is the question.
In, so kind of yes to everything. There, so all teachers are required to participate. So with these goals, I think some of them, I can think of one, for example, where a teacher wrote a goal where they were going to use a new technology to assess students in a skill that, in their particular class, they wanted students to have mastery in. Well, they were learning that technology, and by the time they gained mastery in the technology, they had found another way to do the assessment for that particular skill. But in reviewing the goal with their coach, it became clear, even to the teacher, that, well, yes, I taught my students, yes, they achieved mastery, but I didn't do it in quite the way that I had written the goal, and because of that, I don't earn my incentive. And that, in most of these cases, the teachers were the ones in the spring to come with, to the coach and say, you know, once the year started moving forward, I wasn't able to implement the goal the way that I thought I could implement the goal when I wrote it in September. One issue we do have with SLGs is they are not dynamic goals, so that it's hard to modify them midway through the year because they need to be year-long goals. So in some cases, teachers have very, well, teachers have very high expectations of themselves, and when they write a goal in September, they don't think about these five potholes that they might encounter along the way. So in no case did a teacher absolutely just throw the goal out the window and say, I'm not working with that. There was, you know, a little hiccup here or there along the way that caused them to not implement it fully or implement it with fidelity.
So you are getting participation by...
We are getting participation, yeah.
Okay. There's no questions? Thank you all.
Andy, Libby, Andy, thank you. Thank your entire team.
Thank you. Next up, we have our 1314 budget.
Margot Bach and her team has been busy. It's been an interesting run because we're still learning, I think, even this afternoon. Margot was talking with Department of Education, key players, trying to get the data as we come out of the 2013 legislative session. So welcome, Margot, and thank she and her team for a great job.
Good evening. Thank you. This is the culmination of months of work, starting in December, when you, as a board, approved the final levy certification. And work at the board level, work at the staff level, out in the sites and district office, so I want to thank everybody involved. Culmination of information tonight, the info, the 2012-13 information that... Culmination of information tonight, the infer, the 2012-13 information that you approved in May is incorporated in here. So our update where we think we're going to end as of June 30th this week is incorporated in here and also the budget adjustment plan, the enhancements and the adjustments that you as a board have approved in April and May are also included in here. And the most recent results of the legislative session. So for 1314, and I'll focus on 1314 right now, I do have a legislative update a little bit later in the presentation about all the changes in 1415, but right now, as far as legislation, we'll talk about 1314. We did receive a percent and a half on the basic formula. We had planned, which is about $78 a pupil unit, we had planned at 1%, so that was additional half a percent beyond what we had planned for, so about $235,000, $240,000. We are seeing a slightly under 1% increase in enrollment and then some various other revenues. Other expenditure changes beyond the board-approved adjustment plan, we did have the reduction of the 1213 enhancements and contingency items that were one-time. Election costs, we have board election coming up this year, so there's a cost associated with that. Some lane changes and pension rate changes and liability and workers' compensation. Workers' compensation renewal is further on the board agenda. In your board packets and also out on the website will be this presentation, actually a more detailed presentation of this. And also out on the website, hopefully by the end of the week, if not the beginning of the next week, is the actual full budget document. Tonight, I'm just gonna go through some charts and graphs in summary, but please refer to this in more detail. Finance and Facilities Committee has gone through this in detail. There's a narrative section in that document that kind of summarizes the changes from the previous year and the assumptions in all the funds, not just the general fund. There also is a nice history, five-year history in terms of revenues and expenditures for each of the funds. And then there's detailed formats of the financial information and the five-year history and various sorts of information, so you can do some comparisons if, if you're a detailed person and like to get into that. But for tonight, we'll stick at the higher summary level. Revenues and expenditures by history, by fund, we have three years of actual, where we're anticipating we'll end up for 1213 and then 1314. And then the general fund history, revenues and expenditures by source of revenue and source of expenditure. And then a summary down below of the changes in average daily membership for our students. The unassigned fund balance, which is the fund balance we tend to focus the most on since you as a board have the most control over that. And then the percentage of fund balance. And as you can see over to the bottom right for 1314, the estimated fund balance would be just a little bit over 9%. We try to target somewhere between 6 and 12% and right, sticking right around the 8% level, so we have enough for cash flow and meet the board minimum. Intentionally, we're slightly above that 8% because we did make adjustments and reductions for 1314. That was part of the plan as we looked at a multi-year approach to our budget planning was to make reductions in 1314 to help 1415. The majority of our revenue comes from the state, just under 70%. And our expenditures, we are providing a service, so we would have staffing or labor expenses associated with that. Another way of looking at then those salaries and benefits is by employee group and the majority is for direct instruction to students. And another way of looking at those same expenditures is by program area and instruction, instructional for special ed and then support services to students comprise 80% of our budget. So either direct support to students or support type services to our students are def, well beyond the majority of our budget, as well it should be. This chart we had started using in the middle of the winter in our budget process and we used that highlighted red area to highlight the gap in terms of revenue versus expenditures projected moving forward. At that time, we were using, using the governor's budget for revenue for 1314 and 1415 and then running different scenarios in terms of the adjustments we needed to make for 1314 to help out 1415. And so the dotted line then shows you now reflecting what we know today with the legislative session being done and with the adjustments we've made, how that has changed, this chart from where we started looking at it, I think probably in about February. And you can see for 1314, the combination of the legislative changes and also our work in making adjustments to our budget. We did have enhancements, but we also made some reductions. We're on target there and it changes that trajectory into 1415, which was the intent and the plan of what we wanted to do. Now, I will qualify the 1415 numbers are still, I'm still evaluating, as Dr. Dresson said, information from the state and I'll continue to monitor that, but all other things equal, the, the decisions we've made and, and the legislature has made for 1314 have a compounding impact into 1415. Let me go back here. With that, I'll pause on 1314 and ask if there's any questions before I get into a legislative update for 1415.
Can you just give a couple examples of the instructional and pupil support?
The instructional pupil support would be curriculum, staff development, technology, some types of technology support. Another type of operational or other pupil support would be social worker, psychologists, certainly support to students but not directly in the classroom. Okay? Any other questions? So the majority of the changes in the legislative session were for 1415, some definite restructuring in how schools are funded and some continued or increases in the general ed formula. So the pupil accounting will change. We use weighting factors, or the state does, in terms of depending on the level that our students are at, grade level, they weight them and that our funding is determined according to that. So I'll use for an example, grade one through three students currently, they're weighted, a full-time student is weighted at 1.115. The state's changing that to 1.0 to just, I think, clarify and make it less confusing in terms of the weighting factors. They're also adding all-day, everyday kindergarten options to be funded at 1.0. Secondary will, will remain at a little bit higher than 1.0, at 1.2. What the state's doing with that, because most of those are decreasing except for the all-day, everyday kindergarten option, then they're adjusting the general ed formula down below so that districts don't go backwards on that. And I'll show you a chart that kind of shows it makes the general ed revenue appear like it has increased significantly, but a portion of that is to accommodate for this change in weighting factor. However, they did adjust the general ed revenue for 1415 and they did increase it by a percent and a half, by $80 a pupil unit, and that is an increase. That's not a change just due to the formula change, so.
Is that on top of 1314?
Yep. Mm-hmm. So it's a $78 per, roughly a $78 per pupil unit increase for 1314 and then a roughly $80 increase for 1415.
Thank you.
Percent and a half both years. Then there's several formulas that are adjusted because of this pupil weighting change. They go through a whole system at the state to make sure that you don't go backwards because of that change or districts don't go backwards. So you see some of those areas that will have their formulas changed. It's not an increase in revenue, it's just to accommodate this new funding structure. There is a new funding for the metro districts called location equity revenue and there's also some adjustments to the referendum revenue. And what that means is location equity revenue is an additional $424 a pupil unit for metro districts because of the higher costs associated with being in our region. That can be taken off, that what, it is reduced from a referendum dollar amount. So all in all, it's revenue equal. What it does do is two things, what I found out today and about four this afternoon, so I'm still learning and confirming all this. Because you roll the referendum, $424 of our $1,823 referendum into this location equity revenue and the, this legislature also redoes the cap with all this, we will now have $459 roughly per student available because we won't be at the cap anymore because of how this works that we would if we so choose at some point in time now or five years from now pending same legislation or 10 years, whenever, that we would be able to go to ask the voters if we had a need, we would be able to ask them for more dollars. The other piece with this change is that we currently are not levying all the dollars, able to levy all the dollars under current law that the voters have approved for us. We are levying about $60 left, less because we bump up against the current cap. And with this change and the combination of these two formulas, we'll get access to that revenue.
So that's automatic? That is automatic?
That's automatic. That one's automatic because the voters have already approved it, we just haven't been able to access it. The other isn't automatic and, but it would just, we would have that availability to us if, if needed.
So location equity revenue that they gave to metropolitan districts is only if you go to your voters and get them to approve it?
No, the revenue that, the, really what that is, is location equity revenue, it decreases the referendum value by that same dollar amount, so it's $424 a pupil unit. So our referendum will go down and the location equity revenue will go up, so that is a new, it's a shift.
Okay.
But then what it does is create this opportunity that if we need more dollars, we can go to the voters and ask for it. Does that help?
All right, yes.
And then the other piece, because of, we have not been able to access 100% of our voter-approved levy authority currently, so the, the second piece to that is that we're able to access an, an additional $57 roughly, just under $60 a student, that we weren't able to access before.
And does that need to go back to voters?
No.
Or no, in our case, since they had approved that cap, it's just, it's a shift and a, gets filled in again?
Right. Right. It will. And now, you'll see that, that particular, that second piece, that we haven't been able to access those dollars, you'll see that in the levy certification in September and December. And I'll kind of shift quickly over here to the levy formula changes. There's a lot of changes just in formula, on the levy side, the aid side and the combination of both. I'm trying to highlight where the new revenue comes in and the impacts to the district and we don't have any of that information yet except in summary format. That will come out in September in the preliminary levy certification and then I'm, will be do, doing lots of explaining on how that all changes and works and impacts ed unit, local taxpayers.
Can you, I'm sorry, go ahead, then.
The $57, does that automatically come in or does the board have to take some action to get that money in?
We would automatically have authorization through the levy process and so you as a board would have a choice in that annual levy process. You wouldn't have to ask voters, but you do have a choice whether you, as a board, you want to choose to levy it or not.
So I, I just want to understand it better because we changed the weight per student, so is now, is the net, what is the net change per student now? Is it that $80, that is the net change that we're seeing or, because I'm not sure how we, we reckon with the change in the weight?
So the, the true increase, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
The real increase for 1415, the real new money on the formula is the $80 per student?
So there actually will be $80 in 1415?
Yes, there will.
And in 1314?
$78.
And those, that's the actual number? So the rest, the rest of it will just be, if it looks like we're getting more per student, it's just because we have changed the, the weight, so, so the actual per student figure will change just so we-
To adjust for that.
To adjust for that, okay.
And these areas here on the left are just adjusted for that formula. It'll look like there's more, but it, it's because of that weighting factor piece. The all-day K option, special ed funding, that more information will hopefully come out throughout the summer and into the fall on that. Most of the funding changes there will come in 2016. They're going to do some transition pieces to that, that we're gathering more information on for 1314 and 1415 to get us to the place that we need to be. There's some real positive things on the surface that look good in that funding change, but we don't have a lot of information yet. The financial impact and the projections show that we're gonna receive about the same for 1415, not a huge amount of difference because we're in that transition piece. I don't know what it looks like yet, 2016 and beyond. But they're adjusting how the whole funding's formula is calculated to include students with different, varying types of disabilities that are more expensive, that the funding would adjust accordingly for your higher needs, more costly students. And so between Penny and I, I'm sure we'll be keeping you updated on that.
But this literally is the most significant funding formula change we've had since 1970s.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it's transformational, so it's gonna be confusing and it's gonna probably take about three years to implement, but it's a huge step forward, you know, because I think it does level the playing field across the state. Not just for the metro school districts, but there's a variety of tools and techniques that were used here for regional centers and a variety of places. It's gonna take some time to implement, but it, it really is a good step to align funding to the mission of the state.
So the philosophical idea of the fact that now there's no like different weight between, I don't know, the primary one through three and four through six and kindergarten, they're all gonna be, your revenue per student is gonna be equal, right, for all these students going forward?
Yes.
Am I, am I understanding this word?
Yeah.
Is there a philosophical, is it gonna make any kind of a change in how we can budget students because now they're all getting the same allowance?
Typically, when we're budgeting for student, we use average daily membership and have it, use the weighting.
So it has not affected us in the past?
Right.
Okay.
If, if, you know, it's not always a conversation to look at how we allocate dollars irregardless of what the, the formula is, but that is something we can take a look at. And I do, there, a lot of these changes have, many of them, almost all of them actually, are part of, have some resemblance to the funding group's work.
But you were on Rick, right?
Which is very good, which is very good, moving in the right direction.
Rick, can you just expand on your last comment, you know, that it's, it's some of the biggest changes we've seen since the 70s and, and what are the benefits of, of the changes that you're seeing?
I mean, the fact is education has shifted. I mean, this was the old Minnesota miracle model was the funding formula and it was a, it was a very effective tool and it took us and we twisted and turned it as much as we could, but I think there were studies going back to the late 80s recommending a change in the funding formula. The latest shift, especially around equity aid and around some of the shifts in special ed really became much more enlightened in 2003 when Governor Plente had his task force. And then there were efforts at, by educational groups who did studies, all these were based on research, but when MDE, Department of Education and Governor Dayton in 2011, or 2012 I should say, asked the study group to come together and say, what can we do with it? And those recommendations bubbled and then again last summer, the task force came together. I was on three of the five task force, excuse me, but these are all critical projections for it because this is how learning is occurring, this is how learning is shifting. You take special ed, education, for example, we're basing on a funding formula from 1970 and the services we provide today versus 1970 are very different and there's, there's statistics all over. We're one of the last states to take a look at all-day kindergarten- We're one of the last states to take a look at all-day kindergarten. We're one of the last states really to make a funding formula shift. If you look again nationally, what's happened, but this is a great step. By weighting, I think we have a stronger platform, a stronger formula now than had we moved quicker into it like in the late nineties or at the turn of the century like many other states did. So I think we're going to benefit from this. It's still property, land-based, and I don't know how long that's going to stay that way in education. I think education is going to continue to evolve, you know, as it's going to be more, it's going to probably be more transparent and more virtual across school districts. So I think there'll be some more shifts going on, but I think over the next, I would say over the rest of this decade, this is going to serve Minnesota well across the state. Regional differences, like your St. Cloud school districts will see a differential also because it's more expensive there. There's just a lot of touches. And the marvel of this was the Department of Education was able to do this and not have anybody fall back. I mean, they were able to make adjustments so that there were no losers in three hundred school districts in this. And that's tough to do when you're making change. And one point five percent, one point two-five percent, whatever that is, is not substantial change. And yet, Tom Melchard, who was the master behind this whole effort, really needs to be complimented and did a lot of listening and his staff did a lot of work to make this happen. And then we need to commend our legislators and the governor for bringing it forward. It came through at the last weeks, but it's a success story. And I think students across the state of Minnesota truly are going to benefit from the shift in the funding formula.
Thanks.
Margot, this additional fifty-seven dollars will be only for the fourteen, fifteen, am I correct? We cannot, or can we levy it retroactively for the thirteen, fourteen?
And we can't levy it retroactively, but fourteen, fifteen and going forward, as long as the authorities in place.
But it's not for thirteen, fourteen?
And Margot, the fifty-seven dollars, the reason we fell behind there, was that because there was some kind of CPI adjustment to the dollars coming in?
Yes, one of our referendums has the CPI inflationary index to it, that the department calculates. But with that, then it does increase and we bumped up against the cap and weren't able to access those dollars that we have the authority to access. The authority from the voters to try to access, we couldn't anymore, so.
Additional questions or comments?
Next step, I'll just keep monitoring all these changes.
Thanks, Margot.
It'll be fun.
Thank you, Margot. Next up, we have our leadership update. Lonnie, did you get a chance to ask any questions if you wanted to?
I sent an email to Margot and I got my answers, thank you very much, Margot. Like Rick, I believe that this is a step in the right direction.
I'd like to give the board a quick update again on our planning going forward. Many of these items you've seen more than once, so I will move through them rather rapidly. But I think again, it's important so we keep framing this plan that we have for making sure we do reach that mission of all for all. One of the big pieces the board will address tonight and administration's recommending going forward, that we approve the secondary academic program. Again, it's a strong focus on the whole thought of excellence, Edina excellence. So that core is going to continue to remain strong, but how do we complement that core as we continue to move forward with the next generation of Edina Public Schools? So we'll be advancing our excellence with a variety of strong recommendations. There were five major outcomes. The work of the task force, the work of the design team worked hard on bringing all this information together. Board has seen this again before. When we look at what does this mean, as far as if and when this is implemented, over the next three years, we're going to see the development of global skills and competencies that we really will make sure our students, the skills and competencies be globally ready. Many of the skills are in place, some skills will have to refine and, and then how do we bring that into measurement? Second one talks about increasing student ownership to their learning and getting students more engaged and planning around that learning. And how do we support that work? Some of the redefining actually the roles of the teacher, the student, administrator, and the parent. The third talks about having competency-based pathways, again, where we get more into defining what we're teaching, how we're going to measure it, and then whether they're successful or not, how do we advance their work? Another major area is just that learning is a constant. And so how do we realign the resources of time, of schedule, of space to make sure that they complement and advance the learning? Again, how things have shifted for us. And finally, the role of collaboration and how we need to continue to work together, find new partners. It's the new delivery systems within our schools, but going beyond our schools and finding new partners. Major shifts, subtle but powerful ones that we plan to implement over the next three to five years. Some of the key actions again is framing the project plans for the strategic shift, exactly making sure that we have the detail down, the accountability, and how we're going to measure the progress. Second area is again, making sure we move forward with our power standards, identifying what are really the key items in grades six through twelve that we really need to make sure students are mastering as they move through and how are we measuring that? Again, taking a look at ninth grade and one of the steps that we'll probably be recommending yet this summer is that that ninth grade, those grades that ninth graders receive will count on their diplomas for graduation, one of the things that came from the study. PLCs, our professional learning communities, and team time will continue to be a high value. And we appreciate the work the board took earlier this school year when they looked at changing our school calendar, allowing for more flexible time for our teachers to do that work. Some of the pilot projects that we will be moving forward already this year is expanding our Bring Your Own Device, our e-learning square that the board will be acting on later tonight. That'll expand potentially to sixth grade, ninth grade, and tenth grade. We'll continue to grow that going forward. Looking at more options for blended or online learning where we complement the direct instruction or the teacher facilitating the learning with through technology. The mobile and flexible space, we heard earlier this year how Valley View actually has teachers working off computer carts and the location doesn't matter, it's the access to the technology that matters. Continuing to look at flexible ways of doing that. And then continuing to grow our ability to use the data tools of how we get data to teachers to make sure they can make assessments going forward. All of those projects be piloted, Randy Smazel, his team will be championing many of those initiatives going forward. When we look at the action timeline, a big piece this year again is having this implementation team in place and then developing the framework for them to work off as well as the various projects. Communication will obviously be key, and so we'll be calling on Susan Broad and her team to work through a communication plan that helps shape and understand the vision and get this information out to the staff, to the students, to the parents, and to our community. We'll continue to provide the board regular updates on a quarterly basis along the way, both from an informational standpoint and on a decision-making standpoint. When we look at our framework, the key again is taking a look at where everything sits. The board really is the C choice maker and they'll be making choices tonight on the recommendations. The creating options of this design team was made up of principals and district office administrators who used data gathered by the staff, by students, by parents, by the community, and by our best research we could find, brought those recommendations together. And now step D will be if the board does indeed approve the plan tonight, we'll move into an implementation plan. And so the parallel between B and D is going to be very important. It's the implementation then that is going to be driving the success. And we'll continue to use the best practice in the school improvement process to make sure that we are successful in that implementation. So what we have already identified is the why or the vision. Tonight, the board will be acting on the recommendations or the what, the core strategies. But it is the how, which will be the work of our experts, our teaching staff, our administrators, seeking input from students, from colleagues, from beyond the borders, from parents and the community. But they will be doing the design work on actually how we will be implementing that. That will be championed by an implementation team. Each team then will be assigned to one of those major categories. So it'll involve teachers from across the middle schools and the high school. Will be assigned to a team working on a project plan for each one of those areas. Throughout the process, they'll be seeking input and advice from, again, the collective groups, alumni, the community, the staff, the parents, and students, so we'll have a formal plan in place. This implementation team will include the three principals, include a fine arts teacher, a social studies teacher, a science teacher, a language arts teacher, a guidance counselor. I'll be doing the simple facilitation work, but these will be the team, this will be the team that will be championing each project area and delivering on the recommendations as we present them. School board actions will be to act on all governance decisions. And in the recommendations, it's very clearly spelled out what the recommendations are the action points for the school board. Throughout the process, again, we'll be having work sessions where the board will be updated. We'll also be working through the committee process to ensure that the committee is informed, both teaching and learning, facilities, task force will be another one, so the finance facility one. There'll probably be some human resource issues and challenges we want to address through HR. So I think just about every one of the board groups will be policies, obviously also be addressed. So the board will be very active around this work. And then they'll continue to be monitoring the continuous improvement, which is part of your governing responsibility. Questions on that, or Randy, if there's additions, Susan? Additions to the secondary report or questions the board might have prior to board taking action later, Randy?
Someone had a question? Implementation team, you know, one science teacher, one social studies teacher, does a single teacher have enough of perspective of sixth through twelfth to really impact those areas? And how are you thinking about it? I agree with a small team, I think it's easier to work with a small team, but I'm just trying to get a sense of how you make sure you have that perspective from sixth all the way through twelfth.
So I think that's a great question. The implementation team is sitting at the core, but they are not the sole members responsible for moving the work forward. They are the ones that are organizing the work, organizing the project plans around each of these core strategies. An element of the project plan then is to identify who, what, when from a standpoint of what staff need to be involved when and at what level, what student input needs to be collected when and at what level, and what maybe family input or what governance, school board discussions need to happen. So the, the design of the implementation team is really around organizing those project plans around those five core strategies. And then defining what those different communications with different levels of staff need to be as well. So right outside of this implementation team is a larger team that has expressed interest but didn't want to be pulled out of their classroom as part of this process. But they did express interest in wanting to be involved with these core discussions at different times depending upon whether or not it affects their particular content area. So we do have another layer right outside of this of additional staff that will be pulled into this other team through various points in the year.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Want to touch also on our safety and security plans as we're moving forward on that as well. I think Belle Burke and her team for championing that cause, a lot of training will be a key piece of this. Again, we found no major deficits in our training program, we're just wanting to enhance that. We recognize some consistency in some of the protocols and procedures. Been quite a bit that's come out on this information, and so we'll make that a better alignment. We think we can build even a stronger partnership with the city of Edina around both the police and fire protections. So we'll be looking at that. One of the other major areas and the board will be acting on it later tonight as well is securing our entrances. We have entrances that, our schools were designed well before some of the challenge around safety and security came in play. And so we've been working with Wold Architect, the board did review some of those findings. The architects right now are working with individual building leaders to say what makes sense. But we had set aside about two hundred thousand dollars of capital for some of our strategic work. We think this is a top priority for us to address. And so we'll be piloting some, we'll be able to advance it, but this will be a phased-in process. It's nothing that'll be in place at the start of the year. But we'll be working with Wold Architect to make this a smooth transition in and to make sure that we increase our security, but we continue to have that community-based school system. It's that balance that we continue to need to find, and that's the input we've received thus far. And so we think through some of the training, some of the protocols and procedures, and then doing some enhancement on our security, that we will be in a better place than we were twelve months ago, and we're excited about that. When I start looking at the action plan, again, this is not new information. We have three major areas of personalized learning. I would just point out here that the all-day kindergarten program is something that, at this point, the administration is going to say, we would like to have an all-day, everyday kindergarten program in place by fourteen, fifteen. We know that we do not have the facilities at this point to make that happen, so we're going to be doing some assessment before that recommendation be brought forward. But at this point, from a study standpoint, we're planning to study to move it forward to create the most options possible around that all-day, everyday kindergarten program. We're also asking the board to act on expanding our personalized learning devices in that partnership with Best Buy tonight. We think that's a good place. The other thing that we've worked hard on that we're going to continue to advance is the accountability piece of our strategic plan and the work of the vision cards. Yet this summer, we'll have Chad Schmidt come forward and give an overview of a prototype that has been built around that brings a very lively vision card or accountability component and really starts showing how data is really starting to be used and not have to be sought to help our teachers in their instruction and also help students and their families understand the learning that is occurring or not occurring at a individual level, at a school level, and at a district level. The second major area is around this whole thought of an E-eighty-five system. We will be growing our elementary study to accommodate birth through grade five. We've seen some also good movement at the legislature around some of the early childhood programming. And so we want to make sure, again, we have a seamless program that we don't have this component approach. And so it's going to be a very extensive study, birth through grade five, Randy Smazel and Gwen Jackson. Gwen's got a strong background in the world of elementary education and early education. Will be co-chairing that study. We'll probably use a very similar model, the one we did around the secondary study, but we're excited about that and that planning has already begun. We're going to continue to take a look at time and teacher workload and how we use time across the board. And then again, this movement of aligning our funds to our learning. Those will be major work area around partnership. We're excited about the work that we're continuing to grow around professional learning communities and do believe that as we continue to become more successful in implementing this, the better the learning will continue to occur. Our ALT program complements this very well, as does the new teacher evaluation system. School facilities will be moving fast-tracked and the board will be getting into discussions yet this fall about some of the needs we might have for facilities going forward and how the facilities need to align to some of the strategic work planned. And then we're going to continue to grow our partnerships, that we will continue to find better ways to stretch our boundaries, to enhance the skills that are beyond our borders to help with our learning and also share our talents beyond our borders as well. So those are some of the major initiative work that we're in the planning stages and will be ready once the start of the school year, that'll be in full implementation for year two of our strategic plan. So if I'd look across the board, it's dropping those balls equally. I keep talking about Newton's cradle on us, but really it's that first phase of the secondary study, dropping that facility study and the timing around that. The all-for-all initiative, we're closing the gap work. We've got, I believe, seven different components to that study that we'll be implementing and that's going to align with the e-learning square initiative. Budget and staffing, you see some of the, and Margot's talked a lot about change going on around that, how that complements all those other areas. And then we'll be bringing forward to the board yet in thirteen, fourteen school year, our E-five study. So that we will have framed, the next generation of Edina Public Schools will have begun implementing it. And all around that, many of these other need to complement the work that we're doing all for all. And so it's the pacing, it's the information sharing, it's helping people understand how all this work fits together so that they can see how every piece fits into the whole. But with that, I'll pause and ask if there are any questions about the strategic work we're thinking?
Questions? Lonnie?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. We're off to our consent agenda? Need a motion to approve?
So moved, so they can...
Can I ask one question about an item on the consent agenda?
Certainly.
The policy eight twelve that we're approving as part of the agenda, is that just a necessity to specifically approve that health and safety policy as part of adopting the specific health and safety budget?
Yes, it's an annual requirement, whether we have changed the policy or not, that it must be approved by June thirtieth.
Thank you.
And basically, my understanding is that it ensures we have such a policy as part of our pack of policies?
Yes, it does, and it...
I assume that was part of that, but just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
So we do have the consent agenda, first and second, it is on the floor. Any additional discussion? Rick, could you just walk us through?
I certainly can. Again, it's the personnel recommendations. This is a busy time with our personnel recommendations. Eric Hamilton is the new director of Building and Grounds, and he was on staff today. We're excited to have him joining our team. He comes to us from the Buffalo Montrose Hanover, I don't know if I got it in the right order, but I know it's that school district. Has been very involved with a lot of remodeling and maintenance projects, as well as new construction, and has a great skill set, so we welcome him to the team. But again, there's many other staff members that we're welcoming that'll be great additions to our team, and so we welcome them. Expenditures to approve, then we just have some, again, routine items as relates to district site rates and technician. This was a procedure that we had not formally approved previously, that we did want to get formalized. It was a practice that we had in place. We have some filing for candidates. Again, this is all in polling places, it's all state statute. This is with the November school board elections that come forward at the end of the month, where we'll have posting opportunities, or filing opportunities for candidates, and we'll be doing some advertising around that. We have a student-teacher agreement, and then with that, a field trip approval to Lake Placid. This is part of the summer athlete training. It's a choice program that's, again, around student healthy lifestyles, and that we're going to pilot with the athletic program, and then several gifts from our generous donors, and that would conclude our consent agenda.
Thank you, Rick. Any discussion, items you'd like removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as written, please proceed with a roll call vote.
Almack?
Aye.
Selah?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Cassel?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next up, we have four items having to do with budget. We have our 13, 14 preliminary budget, our health and safety budget, our IEA contract renewal, our workers' compensation insurance, and our safe and secure entrances. Need a motion to bring those to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Margot, we've had some discussion. Can you quickly walk us through those items?
I can. Unless there's additional questions on the 13, 14 budget, I won't add any more to that since there are already visited about that. The IEA contract renewal is a 0% increase, however, we have adjusted based on the five-year history of the number of hours that we use them for. Workers' compensation, we sought quotes for six and 18 months, reviewed that, talked about it in Finance and Facilities Committee. We also then looked at renewing for a 12-month period, because at that point in time, a high claims year will fall off our experience modification factor, and hopefully premiums will change. So again, we are going to delay, I said this a year ago, delay the January 1st implementation in order to hopefully have a reduced cost here. And then, safe and secure entrances, as Dr. Dressen presented in the leadership update.
So the increase in workers' comp is because of some claims we've had in the past? Is that the reason for the 11% increase?
In workers' compensation, it's similar to like health insurance, too, that it's based on your most recent history or claims history, and it goes out three years. And there is, and that drives what's called the mod factor that drives the premium, and we had a high claims year, higher claims year, and that will fall off in 2014.
So it's three years ago, so that goes off.
And so if we waited till January 1, then we miss a six-month opportunity when that falls off to take a look at that. And so we're hopeful on that. And it depends, it also depends on the market at that point in time, too.
Part of the increase is due to just the increase in the amount of salary?
Yes. It's the amount of salaries we're covering, so that affects the premium also, and then your experience change if your claims are higher or lower in that three-year history, and then the market. So it's really those three major factors.
And then, Margot, on the $200,000 for safe and secure entrances, is that primarily for construction costs to change our entrances? As Rick said, they're not, they weren't designed in the current age of our needs.
Yes, that would all be out of the capital fund.
Okay, thank you.
So on those funds, I hope that we're taking a look in terms of expenditures about what the facility plan is looking at for those same buildings, and also taking a look at, if we're going to all-day K, whether there's anything, any way of getting, you know, potentially reorganizing any one of the buildings so that the entryway bears up classroom space.
Yes, we will make sure that if we have, we aren't going to do some work and then have to rip it out, or, yeah, we'll make sure that all that's in place, so that we are thinking ahead and being thoughtful about the changes we're making.
Can we not latch it into the construction, that the summer construction in terms of budget, because we've had some budget savings there? That cannot go from that budget?
Some may, because it's alternative facilities. The only part, some of it will be considered an enhancement or new, and so that would not qualify. If it's removal or replacement, that may, and so we may be able to kind of, who knows, in a particular building, it might be a 50-50 split, I don't know. In another building, it might be 25-75, but we may be able to do that. Good idea.
I realize plans aren't complete yet, but will there be any additional staffing or reduction in staffing as a result of how we're going to configure some of these spaces?
For safety and security?
For safety and security. Any additional, it may be volunteers at the door if we aren't being able to make changes right away in some of the more difficult buildings, or if we need to wait, you know, as Lenny talked about, to align some construction with other construction, if it seems to make more sense.
Yeah, I don't think short-term we have a plan, but I think long-term, as we continue, part of we're going to pilot, I mean, there's several different looks that are going on right now in schools, especially elementaries, with buzzer systems and the whole process of flow through the office. So I think we're going to go slow into it and see what works, but then we will always take a look at how we can maximize our staff, along with, if you can do some things without requiring staff involvement, you can put that staff other places for learning.
Okay, and also just want to make sure, again, this has been reiterated by Lenny, but make sure we do it once and do it right.
Yep.
And are comfortable with it long-term. Any other questions regarding any of these A, B, C, D, or E items? Seeing none, proceed to a roll call, and at this point, we're approving the 13, 14 preliminary budget, the health and safety budget, the IEA contract renewal for 13, 14, the workers' compensation insurance, as well as the safe and secure entrances approval for $200,000. Roll call, please.
Almack?
Aye.
Selah?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Cassel?
Aye.
Scranton?
Aye.
Waldman? Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have our secondary academic report, which we heard a bit about earlier. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or additional questions anybody'd like to ask?
Just like to thank Randy once again and team for all of the work and detail in gathering comments in the preliminary phase. It represents a lot of feedback from a broad group of stakeholders. Thank you.
And Lonnie, I heard you wanting to make a comment?
Yes. I, as a veteran of lots of years in the classroom, I really feel like this is our best chance to truly modernize secondary public education, which has probably needed to happen since about the time I entered the classroom. From 1968 to 2007, I'd hate to count the number of times we've had educational reforms that pretty much amounted to moving around the deck chairs on the Titanic. And we didn't have the technology piece that we have today, we didn't have the peer coaching piece that we have today, and I just want to thank people for the work on this and encourage the implementation team to really think realistically, but to think big, and to think about truly bringing public education into the 21st century.
Thank you, Lonnie. Additional questions or comments? Now proceed to a roll call vote.
Almack?
Aye.
Selah?
Aye.
Meyer? Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Cassel?
Aye.
Scranton?
Aye.
Waldman?
Aye.
Aye.
Waldman?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have alternative compensation. We had our presentation this evening. Need a motion, please, to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Are we voting, did we combine, or are we voting on one and two here, or to separate them?
I'm sorry.
We did vote to combine.
We did not vote to combine, so we need to, we need to prove them separately.
Yeah.
My error. Additional, any discussion? All those, proceed with a roll call for approving the annual report first.
Almack?
Aye.
Selah?
Aye.
Meyer? Aye.
Aye.
Cassel?
Aye.
Scranton?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is the amended MOU for alternative compensation. Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Almack?
Aye.
Selah?
Aye.
Meyer? Aye.
Neville? Aye.
Cassel?
Aye.
Scranton?
Aye.
Waldman?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have our secondary academic report, which we heard a bit about earlier. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Are we voting, did we combine, or are we voting on one and two here, or to separate them? We just voted on one.
I'm sorry.
We did vote to combine.
We did not vote to combine, so we need to, we need to prove them separately.
Yeah.
My error. Additional, any discussion? All those, proceed with a roll call for approving the annual report first.
Almack?
Aye.
Selah?
Aye.
Meyer? Aye.
Aye.
Cassel?
Aye.
Scranton?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is the amended MOU for alternative compensation. Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Almack?
Aye.
Selah?
Aye.
Meyer? Aye.
Neville? Aye.
Cassel?
Aye.
Scranton?
Aye.
Waldman?
Aye.
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 Seconded. Gwen, thank you for the work on this, a little bit of background to you and your team.
Shirley, this is an agreement between the classified supervisors, confidential employees, and other support staff, and it's a two-year agreement for 2013 through 2015. And for year one, there will be a salary increase of 1.45%, and in year two, an increase of 1.2%. This group chose to add dollars to their insurance, a health insurance package, so they will get $5 per month increase, for single, $10 per month for single plus one, and $15 per month for family coverage for year one. And then for year two, there will be a five, $15, and $20 increase for coverage. And for this particular group, they have had two days, which are identified as personal leave days, and most of our other groups have three days, and so this group is increasing to three personal days, which is part of their basic leave. So it's not an additional day that they would necessarily receive in their total basic leave package. The total compensation is 3.01% or $86,874 over the next two years, and I would welcome any questions.
So between compensation and benefits, it's a 1.5% per year average?
Slap.
Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote for the employment guidebook for the supervisors.
Almack?
Aye.
Selah?
Aye.
Meyer? Aye.
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 Motion carries. We're on to E-Learning Squared. Need a motion, please?
Moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the expansion of E-Learning Squared for the 13, 14 school year. Steve, any comments?
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Dressen. Last month, Tim Barrett and Mike Walker provided an update on our E-Learning Squared initiative. Again, this initiative is really looking at how technology, harnessing technology to improve teaching and learning, based on last year's success and what we've learned through that process. We'd like to continue that. Our ninth graders this year will be moving to 10th grade, bringing their devices. We'd like to roll out another opportunity for our incoming ninth graders, as well as expand it to our sixth graders. By approving this evening, what we'd be able to do is start right away, July 1, communicating with families, making sure that the communication's in order, making sure that we have a seamless rollout for the fall, based on readiness of the grade levels. Ninth, in particular, are ready to go. Sixth grade, we continue to have conversations with those families to ensure that the students, when they bring them in, the teachers and the families are ready for that.
Steve, questions?
And so the cost for the incoming ninth graders is going to be comparable to the cost for ninth graders last year?
That is correct. It is based on student enrollment, and so it is per student, and so we calculated, based on the incoming sixth grade and ninth grade student populations, to ensure that we have it, as well as providing a set aside for our families that don't have, or that have economic challenges and can't purchase a device or have some challenges getting a device.
And all these funds come out of the technology budget?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Were you rolling in, though, the funds that were not used this year, because they were not 100% used, right?
We used some of the funds for purchasing devices, as well as looking at professional development, so what we didn't use necessarily in devices, what we did do is provide additional professional development opportunities for the high school teachers to do flipped learning.
Aye.
And Steve, do we have current numbers as far as what devices will be available and what the cost will be for families approximately?
Yes, we do. We have that information. We've been in contact with our partner that are providing the web store, and we have the devices set aside. There'll be five devices. At the low end, it will be a tablet device, which will, for families, it'll be $50. Chromebook, Samsung Chromebook, and for our families, that'll be $100. Then we have two laptops, an UltraBook and a regular laptop, which are around the 400, excuse me, the $550 range.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
So, Steve, are we doing anything different in terms of the professional development aspect of this?
Yes, we are. Um, we are, um, really trying to make sure that it's documented, and it's a little bit more, um, thought out. And so this year, our plan is, we're taglining it. Um, big change starts with one step forward. And so all the teachers that'll be participating in the eLearning Squared, our expectation is, is that we will be meeting with them to kind of articulate what are their growth plans for the years, how do they expect to use the technology, how they expect to work on classroom management, so picking an area of classroom management, uh, conversion of their instructional material into a digital format, or teaching digitally. And what we'll do then is work with those teachers, articulate, uh, what their goal is, and then at the end of the year, collect that information so that we see where the growths happened with those students. Excuse me, those staff.
And will that be for teachers in grades six, nine, and 10?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Steve, can you just, uh, explain to us the rollout of communication to the families, both sixth and ninth?
Certainly. Our plan is, is starting, um, once approved by July 1, is to start communicating with our families. What we'll do is we'll send out letters to our families. There's seven different variations of letters, depending on grade level, depending on, uh, family breakdown, so head of household one, head of household two, if you have an email in the system or not, to collect that information, then also, uh, your financial situation to provide choice. So we'll communicate with them. The ninth grade families, we'll be giving them information about the store and how to access the store, and then what their next steps are, which is, uh, communicating the get connected days and the days of instruction with the police liaison when their students come in. With their sixth grade families, we'll be providing them information about, again, what it's going to look like, when it, when they can start purchasing the devices, additional conversations that we'll be having with those families as we look to leverage technology in the classroom. And so those, uh, conversations, those emails and letters will start right away July 1.
Do, if I could just add just a little bit, we have talked about too, I mean, actually, technically July 1, but we're going to try to start layering multiple communications about it. So the official notice that a family will get about how to access the store and things like that, that will be coming, obviously, by U.S. mail, because it's individualized by family. Um, but we're going to layer that with voicemails and emails, and we'll actually probably start doing that this week, depending on how you vote. So we want to make sure that we're hitting them multiple times in multiple venues to make sure they have the information that they have. And we did learn a lot from the last time about how to communicate and how we can, working with Best Buy, and making those messaging from Best Buy a little bit clearer and a little bit more branded with Edina Public Schools, so it doesn't look like just random email from Best Buy.
And do you anticipate us actually having kids having devices in hand on the first day of school? And do you see that the same for sixth and ninth graders?
At grade nine, yes. That was been the, um, um, the desire of the ninth grade, uh, middle schools and the ninth grade teachers was to indeed do that. What we're looking at the sixth grade is more of a soft rollout, if you will. And so what we want to do is make sure that we're having those students get acclimated to middle school. Uh, that's not precluding them from purchasing the devices, but the expectation of using those devices and having those devices and being a little bit more fidelity of making sure they're bringing them will happen later on in the school year. So there's no expectation that those students start day one at sixth grade, but that they can purchase those devices, start learning how to use those devices, start working with their families, of setting kind of the ground rules within those houses on, on use of those devices with an expectation further on into the school year to start bringing those devices in on a daily basis.
Great, thank you.
And Steve, for sixth and even ninth grade and 10th grade, we're really still in a rollout phase. So if a parent goes, well, my child isn't using this 100% of the time, that's not really our objective. Our objective is to get these things integrated and to see usage increase over the years. Is that the way you're looking at it?
Absolutely. This is a large change, and so Dr. Dressen talked about the secondary study and talked about a lot of the major initiatives that are happening in Edina Public Schools. This is, this is one of those that's going to take a few years for it to really change and transform and be embedded and be second nature in our teaching and learning. And so we look at this as a multi-year approach to implementing technology into the, working with our teachers to, uh, utilize that technology, be ready, working with our curriculum adoption cycle to ensure that our content is in a digital format and accessible anytime, anywhere, and working with our families and our students to prepare them, to understand what is that, to start owning that personalized learning and ownership of learning. And so we see this as another step in that progression down that road.
And in our communication for both age groups, will, are, is there the oppor, I guess, is there the choice if a parent or a family chooses not to participate in this? Or, we're not making it mandatory. Is that accurate?
That is correct. We are high, we are highly encouraging it.
Although highly encouraged, yes.
And we think that it is becoming more and more, as Ron Johnson said, you know, these devices are going to become ubiquitous in our pack packs of our kids and our adults. And so that's a recognition that that world is coming sooner than later, but at this time, it is not mandated. And we will also be providing devices within our schools for those students. And so there are the desktop computers, and there are the laptops and the netbooks that continue to work in our, in our buildings, and we'll continue to leverage those as well for those students that don't bring those devices.
Thanks.
Uh, two questions. What's our confidence that we'll get full participation from the staff at the 10th grade? Because they're sort of inheriting this group with computers walking in?
Our high school actually is our largest BYOD, um, staff right now. We have over 1,100 devices, guest devices coming in every day at the high school. Now, some of those are multiple devices. A student might have a laptop and a smartphone, or staff might have devices, but that's high numbers right now. So we think that there's a, a lot of bring your own device happening. Uh, on top of that, we've worked very closely with the leadership and the BAT team at the high school, which is their building, uh, technology advisory team, to prepare them. So we did a lot of staff development last spring, starting in the wintertime, then working with them. And they worked very hard to put together, um, their plan of implementing BYOD with greater fidelity starting this fall. And so we feel, uh, again, it's going to take some time to fully be implemented and completely transform. We feel that the, uh, teachers have been willing partners as we go through that at the high school, and we look forward to continuing to provide them professional development and continue to provide them, uh, access through Geek School, Geek Squad for their, uh, support as well.
And, uh, thoughts on seventh and eighth? So we'll end up having ninth and, sixth, ninth, and 10th? And, uh, have you thought beyond this fall?
We see this as this, as this rolls out from year to year. If it continues to be successful like it is, then what we can see is, after two more years of this program, we'll actually have had a full implementation. So our sixth graders, when they get up to ninth grade, we expect them to be able to go back to that web store for a second term. And so this would be a full implementation, and we would get to a BYOD at every grade level, uh, in our middle schools, and as well as up until 11th grade in our high schools. The 12th grade, we're still working on, that's stretching that ninth grade purchase for four years as opposed to three years. And so as we look at that, we might have to make adjustments for the 12th grade, uh, students down the road.
Additional questions, comments?
Um, I guess the only comment I wanted to make is just as a parent of an incoming sixth grader, I do think, you know, there's just, there's a difference with the, with the sixth grader versus a ninth grader of introducing this new technology, expecting parents to relinquish this expensive item to their children to take to school. And there's just, I think we need to just bear in mind that we need to take the parents along on this ride as well. Some of these devices are, you know, new to us as well, like, like the, uh, the Samsung, uh, uh, Netbook and things like that. They're just, they're different, and we need to remember that, you know, we're all kind of going along on this journey with, with our kids as well.
Absolutely. We're calling this eLearning Squared, and I think this is really about learning, not just about learning with our teachers and our students, but also as our teachers look at the digital age, our students looking at how they personalize and start owning their learning, and also with our parents, and this whole idea of how do we set boundaries and what is the appropriate use of technology. And so we're very much into learning and helping to provide guidance and support for our families. So stay tuned. We'll definitely be having additional conversations with our families, and especially our sixth grade families, I believe, in the fall, as we continue to have this learning for all of us.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Additional questions? Now proceed to the roll call vote for the, approving the eLearning Squared.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is our web store agreement. Can I have a motion, please?
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the web store. We heard a little discussion around this. Anything you'd like, uh, can I have a motion? We moved the second. Uh, Steve, anything to add?
I'd just say, as Susan, our communications director, talked about, we've learned a lot through this partnership. It's been, uh, very unique. Uh, there's a lot of demand, and I think there's a lot of school districts that are watching us, and we know that we're approving. And so just as we're working with our teachers and our students and our families, we're working with our partner, Best Buy, to improve this process, to ensure that it's, uh, as efficient and as effective as possible for our families. And so it's been a very, uh, successful year, and we look for, uh, continued collaboration in the future.
Is this the same agreement we had last year?
Uh, yes, it is.
Additional discussion? Roll call vote for approving the, uh, web store agreement?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, uh, we have, uh, three purchases, uh, EES subscriptions, uh, SmartNet, and music instruments and equipment. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Are we combining L and M?
No.
No.
This is just L, one, two, three.
L, one, two, three.
Thank you. L, second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, who wants to walk us through?
I can't do the musical instruments, but I can do the technology. (laughing). Must be in a band on the side. Uh, the, uh, the two, um, the two action items for technology purchases are annual subscription support services for our Cisco, which is our networking gear. As you know, last year, we did do significant upgrades on our infrastructure. This, uh, ensures that if any of that technology hardware fails, that it can get replaced within a timely manner, so we're not without, um, technology. It includes our phone and our internet and our networking gear. And then the other one is our Microsoft Enrollment for Education Solutions. Basically, what that allows us to do is continue to purchase, uh, and put, uh, Microsoft Office, uh, their Windows operating system, their virus protection, their authentication and identity on all of our devices within the district. And it's, uh, it turns out that, um, it is, uh, actually provides the district some savings as a, as opposed to purchasing these outright and having to then replace them every few years when technology advances. So these are two annual purchases that we, we do every year to continue to provide the technology infrastructure for our organization.
Thank you. Randy?
The musical instruments purchase, uh, we have a $50,000 capital budget, uh, for replacing musical instruments. So as a capital item, this allows us to cycle through various musical instruments on a, on about a seven-year cycle. So this is simply, um, three different vendors, the lowest bid, but still great quality, uh, looking at replacements of musical instruments, K-12 in our system. Steve, on those two action items, uh, they say they come from different budget years. Are they supposed to come from the same budget year?
I apologize, that is a typo error. It is for the upcoming school year for both of those, the 2013-14 technology levy budget. Thank you.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the e-
Hello.
Uh, I'll, we'll proceed to a roll call vote for the EES subscription, the SmartNet, and the musical instrument equipment.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, next item is our scheduled policy review, 409, 410, 411, and 538. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, who wants to start on policy 409, personnel employed publication, instructional materials, inventions, and creations? We've seen this before.
Yes.
Any changes from when we last saw it?
No new notes from when we last saw it.
Any comments?
Does this policy affect some of the things that are, the new things our staff are doing, like with, uh, webcasts and different things?
Potentially.
It does.
Yeah, it, it puts parameters. It, it guides staff in their work, and this is something that we actually are going to do some training on beginning of the year, just, we're seeing, uh, more and more opportunities, uh, to make sure that, uh, staff do understand that where their opportunities are and where their limitations are. And so we're working closely with, uh, employee groups, uh, as well as the staff involved to make sure they stay in line with the various policies we do have in place.
Thanks.
Additional comments or questions on 409? 410?
There are a few changes from when we saw 410 last month, and this was as a result of the discussion that came up at that meeting. Uh, first, there's been language added in the purpose of the agreement to reflect the fact that this policy does address all of federal law, master agreements, and guidebooks, whereas previously it referenced state law and FMLA. We've also added the correction that was brought up last time under paragraph four that regarding leave entitlement under FMLA, Family Medical and Leave Act, and then paragraph five, special rules for instructional employees for FML leaves. And this occurred again in paragraph six.
You also changed disaster leave language.
Well, disaster leave language, yes, and this is something that is present in a lot of the agreements. So the reference here needs to kind of straddle both worlds, in that there's a reference here, and then some of the guide work, guidebooks use that language of disaster leave and some use another term. So this particular policy is addressing where it occurs overall.
But that was a change from the last time.
Correct. Correct, thank you.
Questions or comments on 410? Thank you, Regina.
411?
411?
Uh, here, we, again, as a result of the discussion from our May 28 meeting, we had discussion in our most recent policy committee meeting, beginning with the purpose of the policy and the title. Thank you, Randy, for bringing up the discussion regarding the point of the policy regarding procedures and induction. So the title has been amended to reference hiring procedures, hopefully a somewhat more broad umbrella. Um, in paragraph four F, the word, or the phrase, "high school" has been changed to "building." And then I want to thank Kathy for her recommended language in section four I, I think it's four I.
Yep.
Regarding the Human Resources Department. So that's an overview of the adjustment since we last saw 411.
Comments, questions, concerns? Okay, the last one is 538, student field trips.
And as we, I think we mentioned at our May 28 meeting, the purpose in revisiting this policy is to take a look at the frequency of an international experience, so that, you know, the language that has been focused on is in paragraph five B6. Another part of the discussion that we had at our last committee meeting was in reference to paragraph four A4, which addresses due diligence in reviewing a field trip site. This is part of an ongoing discussion at a committee level, so we'll see this come back up again. So the purpose for this current approval this evening is really to focus on the international experience.
But I did note that you took the language out in the body of the policy.
Correct.
Four A4, but yet you added it into the appendix in one of the checklists. Was that intentional?
I don't know if we intended to do that, or if that was part of our earlier reference point. Do you suggest an amendment for consistency?
Well, I would suggest you're consistent.
I think consistency could be good.
But I thought perhaps philosophically you would, made that choice, and I was just asking about it.
No, and it's a good question.
No, and it's a good question. The philosophy of it is under discussion. So, for the time being, I mean, the appendix can live a somewhat different life from the body of the policy, but the intent is consistency. So, we can certainly propose an amendment to strike in the appendix.
I think it's appendix two, if I recall, but let me.
I believe you're right. Let's confirm. It is a checklist. No, you're correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is part of that, appendix two. And this was part of discussion that we had earlier. This would have been the May 9 policy meeting, when that came in. So, we did take a look at it last time, but you're right. We did strike one and not the other. So, why don't I propose a friendly amendment that we strike the language referencing prior site visit in the checklist, and we'll revisit that when we come back to this discussion.
Right.
I'd support that.
Appendix two, yes.
Done. Additional discussion? We now can proceed to our roll call vote for 409, 410, 411, and 538. Updated policy?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, and thank you to the policy committee for all the work. Next up, we have discussions. First item is 13, 14, committee appointments. We do have the amended version. It's hard copies in front of us. And this is sort of the first time through. Rather than getting into a lot of discussion tonight, if anybody has any questions, but let me know what committee interest there is for the upcoming year. And then, also, we may have some new members coming January 1st. We need to think about that as well and how that sort of plays out with all of these positions.
Randy, the board policy-
Can't quite hear you.
Can't quite hear me?
No.
Now we can.
The Board Policy Committee pretty much decided to function without a chair. So, to please take that off of my name, please.
So, you demoted yourself?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Lonny brings up a relevant point. Is the list current in how we lay it out, and are there any other committees that either have been abandoned or are not functioning, or committees where we're missing representation that have been formed recently? If anybody thinks of anything, they can circle back to me or to Rick or to Sarah. Anything else? Okay. Now we've got our policies. Who wants to start?
Okay. I'm still updating the last policy. I shall move forward. Unless, Lenny, Lenny or Lonny, if you want to jump in?
Regina, you're way too organized for me to jump in on you.
Here we go. 412. I found it. So, 412, the suggestion is general language cleanup, unless anybody has other questions regarding 12. That's the focus of discussion so far. Policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Again, updated statute language and references, in addition to clarification of languages, clarification of language. And moving on. 415, personnel mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Again, clarification and language cleanup. 418, same, language cleanup and updated legal references regarding alcohol and drug-free workplace. And 419, tobacco-free environment, general language cleanup, with some side discussion referencing the link between this policy, which addresses personnel, and policy 632, which addresses the student end of that policy. Some future discussion may include looking at tighter language regarding tobacco language for 632. But 419, it's general language cleanup.
Do we have any particular parameters around how far away from things we have, smoking has to occur? And does that apply to anybody, including any visitors to a building?
The site says smoke-free environments would address that issue, or are you referring to something different from that?
If you pull into a parking lot and you're smoking a cigarette in the car.
Buildings and grounds.
Grounds. You cannot smoke in a parking lot. It's the ground, so.
Okay.
So, district property.
District property.
District property, period. Correct. And 620, course credit for learning, general language cleanup.
You did miss in the very first purpose, when you, you have your thing now, where you make it more active language, you need to take out the is to there.
This policy is to, thank you. Just to make sure it's being read, we will clean-
I just didn't want you to think I didn't read these. I did.
I trust that you did, but thank you. Now, this is good.
But I wanted to find one thing, so you knew I was doing my work.
Awesome. Kathy is that secret fourth person in the policy committee.
One never needs to leave policy. It is our board obligation. Thank you. I will make that note. Do we have one more? That's it.
That's it.
Any other comments from these? Can we take them back? We will strike a word, one word down.
Two.
Two words, two words. Is two. Two words down.
Thank you. Policy, lots of work. Good work. Anything else? Additional items? We have a few in closed. Announcements?
Just to make the board aware and the community aware that in April, we had the United Edina 273 representative from their group came and asked some questions about the board engagement as far as next steps. The policy committee did in May frame some questions that we took to legal counsel. One of the findings from that was that, that state statute does not allow Edina Public Schools to get into agreement with 287, where we'd be exchanging tax revenue. And so, that would not be allowed for us to do that. It would have to be in a total partnership. We went a little bit deeper to find out about detachment, and again, counsel recommended that we stay with state statutes. So, the changes that would need to occur, if anything was to occur, would have to move through a state statute process. I did have a verbal conversation with Alan Kohler, who was a representative who spoke that night. And then, the policy committee plans to meet in July or August with representatives to talk more about it and then our possible next steps. The other thing, just to remind the board, there's a policy committee July 8th. And so, other than that, the policy committees do not meet in, I mean, our committees do not meet in July. And so, only the policy committee is meeting. And if the board is interested in one of our summer leadership read books, I did bring those books present, so if you want to take a look and do a little summer reading, and then connect with our administrators who are involved in that reading, you're more than welcome to. With that, we are busy with construction at Concord Elementary and making sure that that building be ready the first day of school. Major overhaul going on there. Lot of training going on in all areas. So, very active summer of learning for our staff, and also active programming for our young people as community education services is all out in full force, as well as a variety of summer programming offered at all levels, high school, middle, and elementary for our students. So, it's a very active summer at Edina Public Schools.
Thank you, Rick. Any other additional items? Seeing none. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none. We are adjourned.